Public Works Craig Scott, our Administrative Services Director Angela Quarter, and our Senior Planner John Paul Harries, and as well our City Clerk Lauren Burgess. And with that, if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that. We are now at Item Four, which is Approval of Minutes and Notice of Waving of Reading of All Resolutions and Ordinances Introduced and/or Adopted Under the Agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you. It was a little slow in the startup here, but we got it. We got it moving. Yeah, it's warm in here. Any further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show that's a 5-0 vote in favor of. And we are on to Item Five, which is Announcements. Meeting Orientation for New Attendees and Viewers. In Conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council Rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as "action" items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a "citizen's business" item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments, as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall, as part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park-Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit www.sonomalibrary.org. This past Tuesday, myself and Mayor Gina Belfort from Rona Park did read to three- to six-year-olds. The theme was bunnies. Is there a show a hand? Was anybody there? I don't think I saw any of you out there. Okay. But it was a good time, had by all. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code, which is (94931), to (888) 777. The next Coffee with a Cop is at the Kattati Coffee Company in downtown Kattati. Join Kattati Police on Thursday, May 2nd, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. No agenda or speeches, just a chance to ask questions, voice concerns, and get to know the officers in your city. And finally, Measure G supports a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatiscity.org. All right, that brings us now to Item Number Six, which is Approval of Final Agenda. Do we have any changes to the final agenda?
No proposed changes, Mayor.
No proposed changes. Very good. We are on to Item Seven, which is Citizen's Business and Public Comment for Consent Calendar Items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. Do we have anyone who would like to address the council at this time? Ms. Alderman?
After ten months, I haven't received a public apology from John Moore for using his city email account to call me batshit crazy. I am attaching it. I am going to post evidence that he did make the statement. It is searchable as public record. And I'm putting it there because you always bury all of our comments. There's only one copy of my comment back there, and nobody reads it at the end of the online. It is searchable as a public record request that I received February 9th from Lauren Burgess. I am so worn down from all this psycho and crazy offense to discredit and shame me for your own benefit. All I do is tell the truth and have evidence for every word I say or write. You have no defense to the truth or the evidence, so you sling personal insults in return. This ends now. This has been going on for nearly five years. Sorry, I need to catch my breath. With no consequences to any staff or city council member, your lack of ethics in covering up for each other's misdeeds stops now. The truth is coming out, backed up by evidence. This is what happened that started the psycho offense. It was all you trying to cover up, that there was a major breach of the Public Records Act, and Mark Levine's office had to become involved. Here is the basic stories. The Stanley and Vicky Parker said that I was psycho for at least two years. The Stanleys terrorized and shamed my family through the great founding of the city, so they could walk away from hundreds of thousands of dollars of damages. The Stanleys had cooperation and help of the city. Those early months after the fire, the Stanleys would scream at me phrases I had used in emails to the city staff. When my attorney went down to the city offices, he found a pile of emails in the Stanley's building file, plus some letters to the Stanleys from the city. There were no public record requests for these emails that were in the Stanley's building file. At that time, I did not know that emails to city officials were automatically public records. After Mark Levine's office became involved due to the Public Records Act being involved and authorized, the city started putting the blurb about the emails being public record of every email in the city. A few days after, my attorney went down to the building department and found my emails and the letters, they disappeared. They were never found despite public records requests. That's as far as I can go.
No, I mean, I'm going to allow you to finish reading if you'd like.
Okay.
I know it's a little bit long, but, you know, we make these exceptions, so go on.
Meanwhile, the Stanleys were power washing the hazmat-level fire debris into the sidewalk gutter and into the city's stormwater system. The city had independent lab results that the soil sediment was highly toxic. The city knew they would be liable for the environmental damage, so they started on this psycho offense, and has continued since then. The city got away without paying many bucks for the environmental damage caused by their neglect. For years, the city never looked at any evidence or required any backup to what the Stanleys claimed. For instance, all evidence was that the Stanleys had only four slender homeowners' insurance, and this was presented to the city multiple times. There was evidence that the Stanleys' forced lender insurance company were not deprived by the Stanleys with any money to rebuild. The Stanleys didn't even have liability insurance for the explosions to neighboring properties or the vehicles damaged. Plus, they were deemed 100% at fault. The Stanley's house was already deep in foreclosure when the fire and explosions occurred. There was evidence submitted that there was an imminent foreclosure sale of the property that was happening in September 2015. In order to cover the time to wait out the foreclosures, the Stanleys, with the city's help, held a shame fest of a public hearing against me in August 2015. The Stanleys completely lied. There was 100,000 insurance payment pending. The council never consulted the agenda packet, which had provided the evidence that the Stanleys were lying. The council never asked the Stanleys to verify or document that the insurance payment was pending. And granting the extension based on lies, this allowed the Stanleys to walk away from hundreds of thousands of dollars of liabilities in the foreclosure sale in October to the foreclosing bank. The foreclosing bank had no idea of the toxic mess they inherited in the foreclosure sale. The district attorney's office eventually became involved in the fraudulent foreclosure sale. However, the matter was considered more civil than criminal, and the foreclosing bank decided not to pursue the civil action against the Stanleys. Like our insurance company, who after an investigation into the circumstances of the situation, the foreclosing bank, like an insurance company, wrote off hundreds of thousands of dollars of liabilities rather than take the situation to court. Then, as soon as the foreclosing bank took ownership of the toxic mess, the city wrote up the building health fire codes violations against the foreclosing bank, which is basically a virtual bank out of state. They never wrote up one violation or enforced one building fire code or health code with the Stanleys for 15 months. It took a while, but eventually the virtual bank was able to do an abatement demolition of the property in March 2016. However, on December 8th, 2015, there were workers hired by the foreclosing bank, digging and doing yard work, not wearing any protective gears, i.e. masks. I called the property maintenance company and told them the situation, that there were known chemical contamination of the soil, and their workers were being exposed unknowingly to the contamination. The company called the workers, who stopped work and drove their truck to the dump to get rid of the toxic dirt. It was a Tuesday city council night, so I went down and confronted Vicky Parker about what had happened with the workers being exposed to the contaminants unknowingly. She called me repeatedly psycho and said I was way off into another reality. I told her the reality that she was to be expecting a call from the bank's property maintenance company, but how the city participated and the workers being exposed to known chemicals and metals unknowingly with the city's help. I left and returned a few hours later for the council meeting. I had written that what happened in the hours between, and I was reading my statement during citizen's business. At the time limit, Wendy Skillman, then mayor, started speaking over me, so nobody could hear what I was saying. After a minute, Wendy Skillman told Chief Parish to remove me for disturbing the council meeting. All I was doing was reading my one-and-a-half-page statement of what had occurred that day. Chief Parish approached, and I sat down. The webcast for that night had technical difficulties that mysteriously started at the citizen's business item and stopped after the citizen's business. The only witnesses to this was George Berich and Dave Williams, the ex-community voice reporter. Dave Williams tried to provide me later with his audio recording of this incident, but the recording was not clear enough to understand what's happened. You all in the city council have disrespected me for years. I am tired of it. It ends now. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Is there anyone else under citizen's business? Mr. Berich?
Good evening, council. Thank you, Mayor, for giving Ms. Alderman extra time. It was very gracious on your part. You can see how emotionally upset that she is over the many years that she's endured some mistreatment here from City Hall. It's been quite a saga that she's gone through. For the benefit of the audience and the folks at home, my name is George Berich. I'm a former city council member here, and what's happened to the Alderman family through this tragedy is truly a community embarrassment. I understand the city's legal position, that they really don't want any part of this, taking any responsibility for what these people have gone through. Yet, there has to be some sense of decency and morality, where our city leaders can kind of do some one-on-one with families like this that are so abused in this fashion. I also want to say one thing about your opening statement tonight, that the public is welcome to come before during this period and say whatever they wish. Well, that's really not true. That comes with some qualifications. You get to say whatever you wish if sometimes you don't mind being mocked afterwards, sometimes interrupted. You'll remember the night that comes to mind for me, when I said something about the city's conduct or statements being asinine, and Mr. Moore and Mr. Deloso immediately interrupted me on the microphone that that language was just inappropriate or illegal, which it surely is not, it's in every dictionary that you can find, but that happens. And when emotions take over, these things do happen sometimes. But you've got to stay true to these principles of free speech. I've been in these rooms where I've heard profanity from other members of the public at times, when things have gotten heated, but maybe it depends on what political side of the aisle that you're on, whether you get a free pass or not. The main thing is that the public needs to be aware that the city claims that the citizens can say whatever they wish, only if they're willing to pay the price of being shunned and mocked, and sometimes being made faces of when the cameras are not on the council, and so forth. So also, I want the council to remember, when you folks say something, and the citizens don't necessarily respond as "no," you should not take that as "we are agreeing with you as well." So it goes both ways. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under this agenda item, citizen's business? All right, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close. And any comments from any council member on anything stated?
No, I would just like to make a comment regarding the email. I don't have the original email here to substantiate that allegation, so maybe at the next meeting I'll bring that up and clarify the record for that. We'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now, did, I should have asked when both of you were up here, did either of you have comments for consent? I mean, you would have said something. All right, fine. So we have the consent calendar, where we have items A, B, and C. Is there anyone on the dais who would like to pull any of those items?
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, show a 5-0 vote in favor. Thank you. And, you guys are going too fast for me. All right, now we're at Item Nine, Direction on Future Agenda Items. I'll start to my right. Any future agenda items this direction? Yes, Councilmember Harvey?
We will probably sometime early next month have an item on the groundwater sustainability. That is going through some action right now. I'll report a little bit more during council reports, but that will probably need to come back to council.
It sounds very exciting. That was, actually, that was in jest, in case anybody was wondering. Thank you. In this direction, Vice Mayor, anything? Councilmember Landman, yes, please?
Actually, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one thing, a little quick background on this. So, the last few weeks, been hearing some numerous concerns from local constituents in a few different venues, I believe staff did as well, at some community meetings, about some concerns about upcoming plans potentially to build a new large 16-pump Arco gas station. This would include four diesel pumps, a 24/7 convenience store, a drive-through car wash, and this would be at the 116, Highway 116 and Stony Point intersection. So obviously, this isn't the unincorporated area and outside of Kattati city limits. But there's enough concerns about this, and a few tie-ins to the community separators and green belt agreements that we have with the county, that I wanted to just give a quick touch on the concerns and see if the council's willing to have this come back, potentially just to send a letter of general concern, as this works its way through the planning department. So to wit, the site is a priority green belt area, and it does have community separators on both sides of it. So this is an area that was approved by over 80% of the Sonoma County voters just several years ago, that is supposed to protect lands between the cities for 20 years and maintain a more rural idea. In terms of the need for duplication of services, there are already five gas stations within two miles, and I understand there are two car washes also within two miles. So we provide these services within city limits, and the idea was to keep that in, so we don't sprawl outwards.
And I would, Councilmember, I would just, like, not get into too much detail. I mean...
Right. So the last thing is, with those, it seems like it's something that would seem reasonable. There's a few more things, but it seems like it's something reasonable. Perhaps we could have a letter come back and see if we like the sound of it. To Supervisor Rabbit, the planning at the county, and perhaps permit Sonoma as well. A quick bit of history, I know this went through its preliminary design review, and I know that design review, actually, on a somewhat unusual basis, actually sent the project back on the basis it didn't fit in with the rural surroundings. So I think there's a general concern, it might, and I'm explaining this simply because usually I would be loath to have us be involved in the county's business, but as there's an intersection there, and it seems like there might be something a little bigger than it should be, not fitting in that spirit, I wanted to see if we could look at it.
So is your request for staff to come back with a staff report that would, if agreed to by the council majority, that it would be in the form of a letter of concern, for lack of a better word, that would go to the county? Is that kind of what you would do?
Something like that would be fine. I don't see this as an emergency thing, and I think we have time, so there's no need to do it between meetings. So that would be the appropriate venue. That would be more than satisfactory.
Okay. Is there sort of a general thumbs up from the group up here to bring that back as an agenda item? Anybody have any issues with that?
I would be open to looking at it.
Yeah. Okay. So be it.
Just due to the proximity.
I too have an item. Wow. We're just loading up staff with stuff for future agendas. So as you're all aware, you know, at the last, and I don't want to bore the crowd, but the last mayors and council members association, there were a number of appointments of electeds countywide to different bodies. And with the MTC one, we didn't find out until that meeting, that evening, that by law, we needed to send three names to the county board of supervisors for them to select, and we only had one name. One person had applied. So two other names were brought up at that meeting, and if I recall, the votes were something like seven cities in favor of Councilmember McKenzie, two opposed. There was then Mayor Hinton from Sebastopol. It was nine cities in favor, and zero opposed. And then Mayor Hagley, I think was also maybe a 9-0, but he was not interested, if I remember right. So he got this worried look on his face. So I was asked by Mayor Hinton if we would bring that as an agenda item back to our council, to either take a vote in favor of her, since again, when we looked at it as a council item, there was only one name. It was just Jake McKenzie from Rona Park. So she's wondering, would we be willing to do that? And that's my request, you know, if there's an interest, and regardless of how we decide that night, is there an interest in bringing that back as an agenda item? That was her request. She's also requesting the City of Sonoma the same thing. So I'm just looking again to see if there's a general in favor.
It's not a moot point?
No, names were recommended to the board. I can't remember the date the board is going to make a selection, but it's not been made.
Okay.
And in fact, it's probably more than two weeks out. So I think if we had to, this could go on the next council agenda, which is, I think, two or three weeks out. So yeah, there's been no appointments made yet.
I think as long as we have time to do it. I would hate for us to put it on the agenda and talk about it and do a vote if the Board of Supervisors have already done their deliberation.
And I apologize, I don't have the date, but Nisa requested that this morning at a meeting her and I were at, and she said, it's, you know, if you guys are meeting a couple of weeks out, then the time should work. If it doesn't, so be it.
But staff should be able to find out when that will be on the agenda. Maybe that's one of the requests, is that we have staff find out when the item is going to be on the supervisor's agenda. If we have time...
So if time permits...
...to pick it up, we will. Otherwise, as you pointed out, it could be a moot point.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure it's not, but, so with that caveat, so your interests...
I'm not opposed to that.
And interest on this side of the table?
I'm fine. I will just say that cost, it seems to be the gift that keeps giving.
Absolutely, absolutely. And let's quickly move on to another topic, shall we? All right, thank you all for that. Any other direction of future agenda items? We had a plate full tonight. It's great. All right, we'll go to Item 10, which is Public Hearings. And the first item is Approval of One 12-Month Extension to the Lasker Knowles Subdivision Tentative Map, subdividing 1.81 acres located at 65 Lasker Lane. I'll turn that over to John Paul Harries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, my name's John Paul Harries, Senior Planner with the City of Kattati. This item begins on packet page 28, and it is a request for an extension to an existing tentative map. Just for a little history, this map was approved back in 2006. This is one of the couple projects that we have in the city that has a map that was approved a long time ago, and has received a series of extensions, both from council, as well as a series of legislative statutes that extended maps during the economic downturn. So this map had an expiration date of November 21st, 2018, and on November 15th, we received a request to extend the map. That qualifies as a timely request for an extension. We also were in discussions with the property owner about developing the property. This, for reference, the map itself is for six-unit subdivision, single-family homes, at the top of Lasker Lane, so kind of where Lasker ends, right above there. And the map itself is on packet page 36, and you can see that five of those homes take access from Lasker, and a six takes access off of Honor Place. So we also were aware that the applicant was coming in with an application package to complete design review. In 2006, the subdivision not only had a tentative map approved, a PUD was approved, the environmental document was approved, and the design review was approved. Of those entitlements, design review expired, and so the applicant is under responsibility to, if they want to pursue the map, to come back for the design review process. So in November, when we received the request, we also received, well, a week later, we received the design review package. So rather than move forward with the decision to consider this extension, what we wanted to do is we wrapped it into looking at the entire design review package, because we had a lot more... because we had a lot more plans that we could look at than just a simple letter request. So what we did in that month is we identified some things that had changed from 2006 that we wanted him to address that may affect the map. And those items were related to the radius of the cul-de-sac to accommodate fire trucks, excuse me, and there'd been water quality changes, and how you approach water quality on a subdivision map. So there was some back and forth between the applicant and us for a period of months. They were able to demonstrate that they could change the radius without affecting the map. And they could accommodate the water quality issues, the concerns that we had about how that water quality was going to stay on site, or how the stormwater would stay on site. And so that brings us to today, where we're recommending that the council do grant an extension to the map. It would be a one-year extension from today, so the map would have an expiration date of April 23rd, 2020. And I think that's about it. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. As well, the, excuse me, the applicant and owner and their consulting team is here.
Great, all right, thank you very much. Would the applicants like to make any statements, comments at this point in time? Or you just want to wait for questions, maybe? Okay. You don't care either way, it's fine. All right, great. So council, any, thank you, JP, any questions for staff or the applicants? Councilmember Harvey?
I had questions, and thank you very much, both JP and Damian, for answering my questions. They were covered in the presentation.
Great, all right, Councilmember Moore?
It's been a while since we approved the original map. It was back in '06, I wasn't even on the council at the time, but, and looking back at some of the other documents, the, the map has the existing lots of the six lots. And do any of, does this project fall within the percentages for affordable housing in any way?
I'll turn that over to JP or whomever.
The project itself, no. They will have to pay inclusionary housing and lieu fee. Because it's less than 10 units, they're not required to build inclusionary housing. They can, they, they just have to pay the fee on a per-unit basis. And none of the homes are designated to be affordable, they would all be market-rate homes.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Landman, any questions for staff? Vice Mayor?
No.
None, neither do I, all right. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment period, and I will ask the applicants to come up to the dais and say whatever you wish, as brief as you'd like, it's fine.
My name's Chris Taluzak, I live at 3877 Grabstein Highway South. I've lived in, in this area for 40 years. This will probably be my last project. I've worked diligently to, with JP, to get this set up so that we can do this project. I think it'll benefit the community in a number of ways. There are homes that are within walking distance, and I think that's where we're headed for nowadays. People want to live where they can walk to downtown, especially you look at gas prices right now, what they are. You know, if you live close to town and you have a bus, you're going to take it. I think it's a good project, and I'm open to anything anybody has to say. And I do have the engineer here where we realign the radius so the new fire trucks or code can, can work.
All right, thank you. And we may have a need to call you back up if there's some questions that come up that we don't have responses for. Thanks. Is there anyone else who'd like to address this council at this point on this project? There's some waving going on, I think that's a yes, yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, council members. I'm Deborah Taylor French, I live at 8701 Dorfman Drive, Cattati, California. I've been there for over 20 years now. I'm interested in this property being developed for a couple of reasons. We have a fire hazard going right up the hill, people who know this area, Susan Harvey's one. We have massive eucalyptus trees. Before we moved in, the, our neighbors, the Lombardis, he was a volunteer fireman and then a paid fireman. Two of those trees burned in a matter of two minutes with two trucks on them from both sides. They're just like having an oil lamp, and we have dozens of them running right up the hill. I would love to see them having to be removed and replaced with more city-friendly trees, and maybe trees that are not quite so flammable. So that's a major question on our parts. And we're interested in seeing how the fire department finds. There were several times problems because of the fact there's so many angles on that hill where they're building that piece of property, and how many houses originally were planned for it, was to try to keep enough room to really make that a turn, a place where they can get up there and treat a house fire, a kitchen fire. Okay, those are my questions and my, my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? Yes, please come on up.
Okay, you're the senior planner. Hi, did you take Dave Walter in spot? Okay, well, we don't miss Dave, actually. To be honest. Hi, my name's Mary Ann Waters, I live at 8416, 8416 Honor Place. I'll notice that in the documents by the city, they called this Honor Drive, it is Honor Place. I had the pleasure of seeing our local fire department this year, and was so glad to see them. And they can turn around in our cul-de-sac, I will say. I don't know if this new one is the same size, but yeah, I love our local fire department, so, thank you. That was a scary, scary moment. Okay, so we're here, we realize this is a tentative map. We were also a little bit shocked by the letter that says if you don't speak up, you know, legal precedents, all of this. So what I had noticed after our extensive meetings, and please, we do not want to go back there. We certainly don't want to do that again. So if this gets extended, more power to them, we certainly don't want to go back to the drawing board. But I'm also hearing Deborah French, there are some things that weren't addressed in the tentative map. And I don't know exactly what tentative means, I realize it's a planning term thing. Tentative map makes me nervous. It's not quite set in stone, okay? And, and so I'm just here to bring up just a few things. I'm not exactly sure what the intent of the Cattati land use code and government codes are, and how long they extend these things. But I'm really glad to hear that you're addressing some of the changes. I'm uncomfortable, especially after the fires in Sonoma County, about have we looked at this and the safety of, of the homes. But we're glad that it's six homes and not the original number that were proposed. One thing we were never pleased with, and this was where Dave Walter came into play, is he had convinced the then-developers to put a house overlooking our backyard. And there was this whole thing about a two-story house uphill from us. They made some accommodations, but my concern is the notes do not reflect it. The notes from those meetings state very little about what we actually said. It's like, Mrs. Waters, Ms. Waters had some comments, okay? So basic, it's like, where are my comments? They are not in the notes, okay? So, so we didn't, we didn't like that house looking over our backyard. If the owners ever wanted to just put a house back next to us, like was originally planned, it was a single-story house, we'd be perfectly okay with that. So just want to put that out there, I realize this is tentative. We are still very open if they want to make a change, if they needed to make a change to make more room for the cul-de-sac, for instance. We're very open to having the original one-story house that was in the first plans. It was not offered in the later plans after they had worked with the planner. So if there are any changes, I'd like that to be noted. Also, there was, it provided for an additional setback off of the fence line. I wanted to make sure that's in the notes. This additional setback should not have been modified by extending the need for a bigger cul-de-sac. So I want to make sure that that setback is still there, that it wasn't modified because of, excuse me, wasn't modified because of the code. It was an additional setback because of where they were putting this house uphill from us. And concerns too, that I didn't see in print, were the design of that house was designed with the roofline the way it is intentionally to protect our privacy and increase the sunlight as it comes down over that house, so that it's not blocking all the sunlight to our yard. We do grow plants, we, we accommodated our backyard by adding koi. We figured if it was going to be damp and cold and wet, we might as well have fish. So, so we, that's what we have, a lot of that back there. But we do grow some of our own food and such.
I'm going to, I don't want to interrupt, but I'm just going to ask you, you're about a minute and a half over, just...
Oh, okay.
Try to wrap up.
I wasn't looking at that, I'm sorry. The other thing I noticed that wasn't in there, the original plan that was approved, they had talked about sycamore trees and a really inappropriate tree for our neighborhood. They tend to get sick here in Cattati, they don't do well. They're huge, make a mess, leaves all over, especially after the fires. We don't want sycamore trees around here, so that, I didn't see that in the notes anywhere once it was approved as a tentative design. And I'm glad to hear about water runoff issues being addressed, because since 2006, well, we've been there since 2002, and we have endured water coming down that hill and hitting the side of our house, and you can actually see it. It just streams under the fence, and we put in extra drains to try to stop it. But it's their legal responsibility to stop it, and we don't even know who owns the property anymore. We were just glad that it wasn't going to be a grow house. We really would like to see that it is going to be actually developed. But lastly, I'd just like to say that the park funding, funding, I guess, going towards a park study, that's the same thing that happened at the new development that's happening at the corner of Valparaiso and, and Old Redwood, is they keep giving our parks away. We don't have anything up there, so please keep that in mind as a city council. This whole thing is being developed, we have no parks, our kids play in the streets. They shouldn't, okay? They, there should have been a park. I'm not going to say that this little subdivision is responsible for creating a park, but please keep it in mind, you use that park money from the developers and you're using it for a study? That is wrong, that is just wrong. We don't have a park, there was an assumption that our kids could walk across the four lanes of the old Redwood Highway where people are approaching speeds of 60, 65 miles an hour. And, and we just don't send our kids and grandkids over there. So please keep that in mind. Anyway, I hope that my, my concerns are in the notes now. And I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? And just to remind folks too, if you could keep it to three minutes, that'd be much appreciated. No other hands going up? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. If there's a need to bring the applicants back up for questions, we'll do that. So let's bring this back to council. Do we have, do we have any questions for staff or JP? Do you have, are there any issues that were brought up that need to be addressed right now? I don't know if there are necessarily, I don't know if you care to define the legal planning definition of tentative map and how that's defined?
Well, a tentative map is the, the original entitlement that the council gave to the project that allows them to move forward with the, I guess, with developing the subdivision itself. That's followed by a final map, which should closely resemble the tentative map. So there's a final map process that they will have to go through as part of this. As far as the concerns that Miss Waters brought up, yes, I did notice that a lot of those concerns were, are being addressed in the design review package. They're not really pertinent to this issue because we're not changing anything there. But we are looking, I did notice that there was considerations about the pad height for home, sun view, window placement. There was quite a bit of changes, and I would be happy to talk with her some more about that before we bring it forward for consideration.
Great, all right, thank you. I'm going to just go up and down the table here, and I'll start with Councilmember Landman, work my way to my right. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, and I'm just going to go through and see, make sure we captured everything that we heard. There was a question related to fire safety about eucalyptuses that I understand, at least, are still on the property. Are they on the property that's to be developed? Are they part of this, are they going along with this, or what can you tell us about that?
Unfortunately, I can't recall if the eucalyptus are on the property or not. I can tell you, one of our comments back to them was, we weren't able to determine which trees were remaining and which trees were being saved in the documents that they originally sent us. So we sent it back with a comment to clarify that particular item. And I apologize, I don't know about the eucalyptus in particular.
I'm, I'm getting some hand signals, but I'm not translating them well. I wonder if you can shed any more light on that? I think you just said what the world wanted to hear, thank you very much. Okay, so that's...
Well, just to repeat, he said they will be cut down. They will be cut down, so if you can hear in the back, yeah.
He was very succinct and right to the point. All right. And last, one last thing. There was a question about tree selection, some concerns about some types of inadjuvant, this is not unusual in neighborhoods. Will this part of the process in the final map come forward for public input at any time, or at least public to hear what's being considered and be able to comment? Or is, I'm not getting the sense we're to the point where species selection's been done for this project?
That will be part of the design review package. There was, there was an original palette in 2006. That, again, that all expired in 2008, so we're relooking at it brand-new again.
So if anybody in the neighborhood was interested and wanted to share their viewpoints, what should they be looking for, and when, when could they have the ability to see that, do you think? Or would it be best just to have them get in touch and you, and register their interest?
Yeah, just because I'm not sure of the timeline going forward at this point, but I think the best thing would be to get in touch with me. I did hear the comment about sycamore trees. So, and I'll, I'll take a look at the landscape plan, see what's proposed, see if that's there, if there's better alternatives.
Good, I think that covers it. So if anybody's interested, you want, want to talk to Mr. Harris? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Skilman?
No, I didn't have any comments, just since it's extending the, the time period for them to, to cover what's already been proposed, and the fact that they're going to come back again with the finals. I'm fine with all of those decisions.
Right, thank you, that's more of the focus, I agree. Councilmember Harvey?
So JP, can you, just so it's clear for the public, I know this is a tentative map, and there will be a final map. Can you explain a little bit more about that process so people understand where and when they may see that and have input to that? I, I think that that's sort of what they're asking, because this says tentative, it makes them nervous. The final is what will be built, and that should have all of the details that were mentioned about this, the house, the setbacks, the water runoff, and the design, and all of that would be in the final, correct?
Well, I need to be careful.
Okay.
There are certain entitlements that, that are getting bundled in your comment. The tentative map, so what you see on, on that page, 38 or 36, is the approved project. There should be virtually, almost indistinguishable changes between that and the, and the final map. The final map process, it's not really a process, I should say. The tentative map was the approval as, I'm trying to figure out what's going to be on the final map that you're not seeing on the tentative map, and there's really no additional information. The final map should conform to the tentative map that the council approved in 2006, unless we were to do a tentative map amendment, in which case we would have a series of hearings for that kind of thing. So what gets done, and so the design review portion, you will not be on the tentative map. You will not see homes on the tentative map, you'll simply see property lines. You might see, and you'll see the roadways, and you'll... You might see, and you'll see the roadways, and you'll see some of the drainage they've included on this map, and you might see some grading elements on the tentative map. But the design review in terms of the home design, that's a separate process, and that's under design review. So, the concern that things were gonna change from the tentative map to the final map, the answer is no. No, things are really gonna stay the same as they are on the tentative map unless we come forward with the design review, oh, excuse me, with a tentative map amendment, which there's no indication that that's gonna happen. It's certainly not desired, because as one of the other applicants said, there was a lot of time spent on this. And so, we've kinda communicated with the applicant, or, you know, with the current owner, try not to change anything that you can't, that, you know, just stay, try to keep it the same, because all of this was fought over, and they, they were controversial projects at the time. So I don't, I'm not sure if I'm covering your, answering your question very well.
Okay, so I'll say it another way, and maybe this, this'll help. It's sort of hard to see all the details that were mentioned as concerned in this little eight and a half by 11 piece of paper. So, maybe another way of putting it is there are more documents that are larger than this that may address some of those concerns that the individuals with concerns can come and look at with you, and you can go over those items to see if they are addressed? Is that fair?
That's, that's a very accurate statement.
Okay.
Yeah, no, most of, almost everything I heard has to do with the design review piece.
Okay.
And that's the part that we're in the review process now. So, yes, that's, there's gonna be a lot, a lot more opportunity for them to look at that again.
Okay, so my suggestion is that you make time to come in and, and kind of look at the bigger documents that they have for design review to see if these individual questions were addressed to, to your satisfaction. And it sounds like the eucalyptus trees are a done deal, which is awesome, because they do go up. So, those are my questions.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Moore?
JP, if you can beg my indulgence on this. If the tentative map is approved tonight, or the extension of the tentative map, it will go back to design review for completion, and council may not see it again.
Council would, you will see it again. Let me make, yes, you will, you will be the ones making the final decision on design review because you were the decision, decision-making authority on the tentative map. So it is a, it is a city council.
Okay, so it'll come back to council?
It will go through the design review administration, it will go to planning commission, and it will come back to council for the ultimate decision.
Thank you.
And, and so, it all comes back together as a package-
Right.
-to council for approval of the subdivision and design review. Yeah? In a public meeting.
And primarily because it is a subdivision.
It's subdividing land, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Because I will say, we're eating into that 12-month time period if we do pass this extension. Just wanna keep that in mind. Yes, Councilmember Harvey?
And will we be sure to make sure that these interested parties are notified when those meetings happen so that they can at least review the material and see if they have further questions or comments?
Yes, absolutely. They're within the 500-foot noticing range, which we do.
Never very sure of 500 feet.
Well, yeah.
All right, we have no further questions up here at the council, then I have no questions because again, our, our focus here is this 12-month extension, so I'd be looking for a motion.
I would make-
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would make a motion that we grant a 12-month time extension to the Lascaux subdivision tentative map, including the attached recommended conditions of approval and all previously adopted conditions of approval resulting in a new expiration date of April 23, 2020.
I'd second.
All right, any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show that's a 5-0 vote in favor of. Thank you all for participating and your comments, and we will move to item 11, which is the regular agenda. And our first item is to receive an informational report on sewer rate model update. I couldn't say it any better, sorry. It is very exciting, I just, I couldn't jazz it up.
Nothing wrong with that name.
There's nothing wrong with it, I know.
All right, Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. Back in August of 2018, we approved a, awarded a sewer contract for a major pipeline. And the, this council asked staff, because there was such a difference in the budgeted cost to what the actual construction contract was, it was a $2 million increase, and that would be, you know, an impact on the sewer rates and our five-year planned sewer model rate adjustments. And so, staff was tasked at that time to go back and revisit the sewer rate model and see if with what we know now, our assumptions are still good, and we can continue to remain on that five-year plan of rate adjustments. And we've, we've gone ahead and done that, and, and the, we've revisited the, the rate model, hired Bob Reed, who was the author of the original study, and he is with us tonight to make the presentation. I'm going to be flipping through the slides, Bob, so you'll have to give me hand signals or nods or something, but I'll, I'll go ahead and let Bob take it from here.
Great, great. Mayor Deloso, members of the council, it's a pleasure to be before you again this evening. I was here before the council two years ago in 2017 when we did the joint water and sewer rate study and financial plans, and at that point you adopted five-year rate plans for each of the utilities, and those have been being implemented with rate adjustments each year. And as Craig indicated, we wanted to update the sewer financial plan. I've done that in the last few months to consider the implications of the higher costs associated with the P1 sewer interceptor project. At, at the time, the, the project was approved and you moved forward with that, you had made some changes with the financing to include a million dollars from the In-Lu Housing Fund in a loan that would be repaid over 20 years, made some other changes to help with the funding of the project. So we wanted to look at, was that sufficient to deal with those issues and still maintain the course with the sewer rate adjustments that had been approved? We also took that opportunity to look at current budgets and other financial information as well as development projections, update other aspects of the model just to dial it back into, to where it was. So, it's, it's not too often that I have the opportunity to bring good news as a rate consultant, I'm often the bearer of, of bad news, but I'll cut to the chase and say that you are able to stay the course with the previously adopted rate plans and, and don't need to do anything more to accommodate this more expensive project. So, as, as Craig indicated, the estimated cost for the project was higher than expected by a couple million dollars, $4.8 million. I just saw an email this afternoon that it might come in a little bit under that by the time the dust settles, so that, that's further good news for the city. And then when you approved the project, you approved using the sewer capital fund monies available in that to help pay for the project as well as the, the loan from the In-Lu Housing Fund, and then accelerated some repayment of loans that had come from the sewer utility, money coming back to the sewer utility a little bit quicker than had otherwise been scheduled. So, that really helped to support the funding of that project. So in updating the sewer financial plan, this was a 10-year financial plan that was developed a couple years ago, and we have a five-year rate, but, but the, the planning horizon on the financial model went out a full 10 years. And that allows you to see what's on the horizon, anticipate what's coming up, and then plan for it. And that really helps us to smooth out the annual rate adjustments. So with this adjust, with this update, what we did is we looked at actual revenues and expenses from, from last year, 1718. We included the budgeted costs for 1819. We dialed everything in with actual fund and reserve balances at the beginning of the current fiscal year. We incorporated the P1 project and the financing associated with that, and we made some other adjustments to the model in terms of interest and inflation. We looked at all of those different assumptions that were in there and, and made sure that everything was still current. And then, you know, one of our tasks was to see, well, if, if we can't fund this project, do we need to do additional rate adjustments? We did play around a little bit with the timing of projects and some other things, but everything fit together pretty well. We have a couple of graphs here that just summarize the financial plan. This shows the sewer operating fund, and the colored bands in this graph represent the different expenses, starting from the bottom. That green band are the treatment costs for the subregional, Santa Rosa Subregional Treatment Plant. Those are your annual costs there. On top of that, in the red band are your collection system costs, the sewer collection, the city's cost of, of the utility. And then the kind of blue or purple are transfers into the CIP reserve. We take a, a portion of the rate revenue and move it into the capital fund to help support the capital projects. The red line at the top are the annual revenues, a little bit hard to see there, but the revenue's coming in, and whenever the expenses exceed the revenues, that means more cash is going out than coming in, and so the fund balance goes down. So that dark, the solid black line is the operating fund balance, and you can see that declining over time, and that's because we're using money to pay operating costs and capital program. Our, our target operating reserve, we want to stay above is that dash line. So you can see over this planning period, we're drawing down the, the funds and using those for identified purposes and staying above that dash line, which is what we want to do. On the next graph is, shows the, the capital expenditures, and I always say that, you know, for, for utilities like this, the capital projects are lumpy. Big year one year, and then a small year the next, and it bounces around quite a bit. But really, the, what we want to do from a rate perspective, from a financial planning perspective, is to continually fund the capital program on a steady basis and then absorb the peaks and valleys within the expenditure. And so we do that with this separate capital fund here. And so again, the, the solid parts, the shaded bands are the expenses, including subregional debt service and then your own capital projects. The black line is the end of year balance, and, and we support that capital program. We maintain a positive balance throughout the planning period with the revenues and transfers in. Revenues include development impact fees here as well. That helps to pay for the capital program. So that, in, in a graphical manner summarizes the, the financial plan, the analyses, and the report we prepared has the numbers that go behind the, the graphs. And, and again, the, the current, your current financial strategy for funding the P1 project is, is sufficient, and the financial plan indicates that you'll be able to fund that project, repay the In-Lu Housing Loan, and meet your other obligations over this planning period. Part of this does look at the development fee, revenue connection fees from new development, and you've got a couple of larger projects. We've got the Kessing Ranch and the Santara Way multifamily apartment over the next couple of years, and we are assuming that revenue associated with the development of those projects come, come through with this. And that helps make the whole funding possible, so those, that's one thing to look at. And then the subregional treatment cost is one item that you don't have a lot of direct influence over, you have some influence, but, and I just heard in the last few days that their increase for the upcoming year is a little bit lower than what we have in the model, so that also helps a little bit too. But that's a, a significant cost to the utility as well. But with all this information, we are able to continue with the five-year rate plan that you had previously adopted. You've got three more rate adjustments, including one coming up this coming July. And then beyond that, it's possible, but beyond this five-year rate plan that you're currently midway through, beyond that, you might even be able to have smaller rate increases than had been previously estimated. So, some more good news there as well. And as always, our, the recommendation here is, is to continue to implement that, that plan as previously adopted, and then, and then each year as you go through the budget process, monitor the financial condition of the utility. And then when you get to the end of this five-year plan, it would be time to do another comprehensive update of not only the financial plan, but the rate calculations as well. So with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you, Mr. Reed. Yeah, we'll see if there's any questions from council. I'm kinda curious on that subregional cost. You know, we saw however many years was on that one graph, probably seven, eight years roughly. The one before this one, I believe. Yeah, that one.
There's a dip there, is that?
Well, no, I like the dip. I'm just wondering if we pulled that chart more to the right, am I ever gonna see that green box get smaller? I know it's kind of a silly question.
Yeah, I wouldn't hold my breath.
Thank you, all right. That's kind of what I figured. Subregional cost, I mean, I'd be shocked if they ever decreased.
Treatment is heavily regulated, a lot of costs, you know, to meet treatment standards and requirements, and the treatment plan and some of the other facilities associated with the regional system are aging and gonna need replacement and so on. So they're, they're looking at all of those issues currently, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see, if you don't mind standing there for a few minutes, we'll see if council has questions when I open for public comment, and maybe some questions will have you come back up as well too. So, start with Councilmember Moore.
I don't have any questions. I just noticed, well, maybe a statement, just the deferral on the capital improvements down the year for one year is obviously the, on the other slide, just pushed out-
Yeah.
-and still within the projections of the 10-year.
Yes.
And, and would you anticipate anything that, that could disrupt this measurably?
In, in terms of, for this planning period here, I, I think that you're, you're very safe for the rest of this five-year rate plan, so you've got three more years. I, I think things are pretty safe that way. The, the one variable in there, and I think it would come into play more in the next five-year rate plan, would be if, if the timing of that new development is off by quite a bit, that that could affect things. There's a little bit of a lag effect as to how that filters through the financial model. And then, you know, of course, if you have other capital project needs that we don't know about now, that that could, could be a wild card. But I, I think in general, the picture through the end of this planning period, through '26, '27, looks better today than it did two years ago, as a general statement. And that's why I said you might be able to have smaller rate increases in the future than what we had estimated a couple years ago, in the latter years of the plan.
Thank you.
Great, that's it? Councilmember Harvey?
No questions.
No questions. Vice Mayor Skilman?
No.
Councilmember Landman?
So let me get this straight. The bottom lines, it looks like we're okay and able to go forward despite surprise extra rates. It looks potentially like we might have some lower subregional wastewater costs than anticipated, maybe even some savings on the unanticipated costs that came in and ran this up a little bit. And even potentially, and I'll underline potential, the possibility for lower rates than planned in the future? I don't think I want to jinx, Mr. Reed, by asking any question. I'm not gonna jinx this good news. I'll let you enjoy it.
And, and I do want to emphasize, not rate decreases in the future, smaller increases than had been previously estimated.
Good correction, but yeah, that's, when we're chart, we're adding costs that are less than expected, that's always benefited for everybody, so, good news.
It's kind of like when staff used to come up to me and say, "I can save you $3,000 by buying these many computers." Like, no, we're still spending money, so, but yeah, it's a very good point. All right, well, no other questions from us up here? We may want to call you back up just in case.
Be nearby.
Thank you. And I'm gonna go ahead and open this up for public comment. Ms. Alderman?
There is something I want to mention before I make my public comment. I'm heat sick tonight because I don't sweat, I have a medical condition, I don't sweat. It's awfully warm in this room, so I'd appreciate in the future, when there's a warm day like this, that the air conditioning be put on.
Apparently it's being worked on as we speak. We can hear the clanging going on behind the wall.
Yeah, but I'm heat sick.
I'm thinking someone's gonna come through this metal grate every minute.
Anyway, the, I didn't hear much discussion on the P2, P3, P4, any capital improvements that are, are planned in the, the discussion. Again, all of you are going to have to speak to my 82-year-old this week mother about her sewer rates. There's not, not a lot. The other thing is, you described in the P1, the loan to the In-Lu Housing. If you go back to the agenda packet, you declared that as sewer- If you go back to the agenda packet, you declared that as surplus, able to be loaned because it was surplus money. It was not surplus money. It was dedicated money for in-lu housing. You took from current needs and put it over 20 years. We had, that was the only fund, I can understand that. But it, that money was meant for in-lu housing now, and that shouldn't have happened. If you go back and look, that's what's happened. Also, it, this, it doesn't, I don't see also in the plans, anything for the, the general city of, other than the P1, P2, P3, there's no general long-term plan. It seems to be, financially, some, a lot of the sewers are 50, 60 years old, and we don't have any plan. It just seems, it doesn't seem to have a plan. Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that. Mr. Beric?
Maybe I didn't hear it, but there wasn't a lot of discussion here tonight about how in the hell did we went $2 million over budget on this project? I was really waiting to hear some discussion of it, we seemed to kind of dance around it as quickly as we could. How do we go $2 million over budget on this project? I'd like to hear some answers.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else on public comment for this item? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. I'll throw this question out to staff, it's a curveball because it just came up, but that is, are, the additional, that's continued work going on for the AC, by the way, so when you hear noise, that's probably good. What, what kind of contingencies might we have for just general upkeep and maintenance of sewer lines? You know, Ms. Alderman said they're getting older, which is true in some cases. I get P1, new replacement, and maybe additional phases out from there. But I mean, is there just some, some general planning guidelines that we have where we look at those every so many years?
Yes. I mean, the, the overall plan is a 2011 sewer master plan, and it looks, it's primarily capacity-driven, but it does have an aspect of it where, where we looked at the condition of the pipes and the infiltration and inflow. And so, coming out of that, we not only had building new capacity to address the bottlenecks, if you will, in the system, but, and a need was identified for plugging leaking sewers, sealing up manholes where you see the flows coming in, and the pipelines where we've observed inflows coming in at the joints. And so, there is money, the, the two things are, you've got money in the capital project budget to address the aging sewers.
Right, right.
And you also have, I believe we're still maintaining under this plan, a 35% sewer reserve. And you saw now how, how resilient our budget has been to take this, you know, spike in the costs, construction costs. And, and so hopefully we'll, I mean, it looks like we'll weather this one out, and if there's another one, you know, we've got the 35% contingency hand holding to our capital program.
Great. So that explanation, I hope, you know, answers your question. That was a really good explanation that he just gave us. I'm going to go this way, just to see if we have any additional questions that are coming. You're nodding, no, you won't even let me ask. Fine. Vice Mayor?
No, thank you.
Nope. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, I just would like to address a little bit of the concern about the master plan and the other items. On page, packet page 49, there are actually, P1 through P9, there are a whole lot of projects, and they actually are spread out amongst years that go all the way out, at least to 2025 is when I see the last, the last big one. So there are projects out there for all the different areas, so, yes, you gave that explanation, but there are very specific projects to address the other areas. And the other thing that was brought up is about the loan from the housing. We, my recollection, and Damian, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection was when the estimates came back higher than we thought, we had a gap, and there were multiple ways for us to skin that cat. One was going out and getting financing, and the other was to look at our accounts that we had. And rather than, my recollection is, rather than pay a bank interest on a loan to cover that difference, we felt that it was prudent to loan the money to ourselves from one account to another. So the money was not taken, the money was loaned, and the appropriate interest for that loan is being paid back to that housing fund. And the housing fund itself, try as we may, we have been trying for a while to get some projects off the ground. I think the last council meeting is the first time that we've actually had a corporation come forward to work with us to actually develop some of that. So we need to have projects come forward in order to be able to use, to use that funding. So that is my recollection, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
That, that is an accurate recollection. So, the sewer fund gets a, a favorable interest rate on the borrowing of the money, and the in-lu housing fee gets a higher than, it gets a higher than normal interest rate on the loaning of the money than it gets right now in its current investment vehicles. So both funds benefit from it, and, and so it's, it's a win-win all the way around. And also, I'll add, one of the reasons why the in-lu housing fund was identified was because when you add up all the potential projects we could be spending money on in the near-term horizon, there was still an additional $1 million on there. Because you can't just spend money, you have to have a project to spend money on. And when you add up all the potential future obligations that we had on the horizon, it was under 2 million. So we had a million left. So it was a good short-term use of the money.
And my recollection on the, on the price, originally, we had anticipated that it was, was put out there, it was going to be 2.9 million, but my recollection is, we put that out to bid a couple of times, and even looked at a couple different ways of, of doing that. And the costs of things, unfortunately, at this point in time are a little, I guess exaggerated is the way, the way to kind of look at it. Things are costing a lot more because there are scarce resources to do things, and that's kind of the same thing, I think, that many people are seeing that are trying to rebuild their homes from, from the fires. It's just that there's scarce resources to be able to do things, so that drives up the cost. Yes, no, maybe?
Yeah.
Well, it's kind of a misrepresentation. I mean, the project, all indications is looking to come in under budget. We had the discussion of the cost being different than the initial preliminary design, and when we had a more detailed design, and the realistic construction numbers came in, and we had de-watering factored in, that, that's when that discussion happened, back in August of 2018. I mean, the good news is now, is the project was constructed in a very trying, challenging conditions in one of the wettest winters, if not the wettest in history, you know, for this area. And we were, we're looking at about $300,000 or $400,000 under budget, which is significant. So I think that's, that's the way to present this.
Good points. That's it? Councilmember Harvey?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Councilmember Moore? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, there's one other thing I just wanted to point out. It's, I think it's fairly obvious, but I'll point it out anyway, because it's worth noting. If we can get the presentation back up on the screen. So, just something I wanted to point out in case, well, in case people are wondering. So this came up, this operated, this wastewater treatment plant operating costs, which is the green part of the stacked line graph. And if you look at, just take a sample year, you look at 1718, that's over $1.5 million in operating costs. So this is not city of Cotati cost, this is, this is the check we write to the Santa Rosa Regional Wastewater Plant to treat the wastewater. The other part of it, the others say, you go up to 2.5 million, that's the red part of that graph, and then the purple on top of that, that is our combined operating costs plus capital costs for doing capital projects within the City of Cotati system. So, you have about 1 million of that, you know, working, you know, for our own, own sewer operations within the city, plus capital money. And then the other, the majority, the 1.5 million, is paying for the treatment. So just to reiterate, that treatment's very, a very expensive endeavor, and when you look at your sewer bills, over half of the cost of the sewer bill isn't even City of Cotati cost, it's paying for the treatment of the waste.
Right. And we're, we're kind of stuck with that, as are other cities. We're not, not by ourselves.
Unless we want to do, unless we want to do it ourself, which would be even more costly. Isn't like Healsburg, isn't that what they do?
They treat them.
And Petaluma, look at the cost that Petaluma had, they had to build their whole facility, and people are paying a pretty penny for that.
Indeed.
Those are your options.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Moore?
No, my, my questions were clarified. Thank you, Councilmember Harvey, and thank you, Damian, for clarifying that. As we know, you know, fires, calamity events drive up cost of supply and demand from when you originally put that out and get estimates from engineers. So it wasn't really a $2 million overrun, so to speak. Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for all your replies to the questions that came up from the public, and I hope everybody had a chance to hear those responses. All right, that was a receive and file item. We will go to item B, under regular agenda, and that is the fiscal year 1920 SB1 list of projects as required by the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Mr. Scott?
I'm awful.
You're saying goodbye. It was a mouthful, and I did it in one breath, too. Mr. Scott, you're on the air again.
Pardon me, Mayor. Can we open the front door? Is it open? I can't see.
The hallway AC is working now, and the front office, so we might be getting that cool air coming in here.
Mayor may not.
So it's going to start filtering in. I can actually feel it already.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd recommend keeping the front door shut.
Don't want anyone passing out here.
We're doing. Apologize for that. Bob Reed is, is retiring soon, so that might be the last time we see him. I think you served us well.
Yes, you did.
Okay. So 11B, we have the SB requirement. So in August of 2017, the California Transportation Commission adopted a final Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. We know it as SB1. The passage of SB1 established a road maintenance and rehabilitation account, our MRA, that requires local agencies to demonstrate that a project funded by SB1 has been approved and described in adequate detail in a city resolution by May 1st of every year. So this is the third time, third resolution we've considered under SB1. The first two, the first one was a section of LaSalle, and then it kind of moved into another, the next fiscal year, 1819, along with the second section, which was Lincoln from LaSalle to the city limits, going east. So those two were knocked off last year in the 1819 street construction project, okay? This is the third one, and so this will be, if all goes well, included in the 1920 street project. And we presented, the staff presented the 1920 street project when we awarded the design of that contract to Harrison Associates back October-ish of 2018. There are two, I mean, it's, it's, you know, the act had a big emphasis on transparency, and so we're supposed to come ahead of time in May, you know, to do what we're doing tonight with the resolution describing the project, what is the timing of the project, the, how long will that treatment last? And then the second part, which we haven't done yet, and because we, we haven't come along, along this first cycle of it, but in about October of every year, we're to say, well, how did it go? You know, did you do what you said you were going to do? Did you build it? Did it come in within budget, over budget, whatever? And so the reason is because 1819 was the first year we completed those two projects. And so we'll be doing that in October for those two projects, and for this project, if, if it's, if we pass the resolution, we'll be coming and we build it. I guess it's possible we can have all three presented for the expenditure reporting in the fall. So we'll, we'll see. But, but right now, tonight's action keeps us in line to spend the money as, as we're getting, we're getting this SB1 money on a monthly basis, and for 1920, the projection is 127,000 plus or minus, and that gets us about 6.5% of our project. It's, it's a project within a project. We're saying, hey, this is our big project, we're doing this to get economy of scale to do it all at once, and the 665 feet of it, we're going to pay with this SB1 funding, and then the rest of it is, is our own money. So, just to put it in perspective. And, so the resolution is included in the packet. There is some timing issue where we'll need to have this resolution signed so I can get it, staff can get it off to the MTC by the first. So we've got this week to really do that. There's a figure in the staff report showing, highlighted in yellow, what, what piece of that? It's, I should mention it, it's, it's 665 centerline feet of Linden Avenue, which extends from Lincoln Avenue to Larch Avenue. And that section has been tested, part of the priority last year's project, and so we're looking, because of the deflections and the condition of the road, it requires something called FDR. And I believe that's been explained to us at the last meeting, it was full-depth replacement, and that was a treatment that was used in the 1819 project. So, that's what we're earmarking this piece of the project to receive SB1 funding for. That's all I have for the presentation. I'd like to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. It's, it's amazing what $127,000 can get you in the world of asphalt. Just phenomenal, wow.
It gets you a block of roadway, yeah.
Depends how long the block is.
A short block.
Short block, yeah. It's amazing.
And we, I have to say, we always do kind of, it is kind of funny, I mean, just because we're a small jurisdiction, we get a proportionally smaller share.
Right.
But the SB1 terminology is, give us your list of projects that you use this money on.
Right.
Like plural. You're like, well, that's pretty easy, it's just one project, and it's about a block, a short block. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's better, it's better to have it than not have it, but.
Better than no money at all. I understand that. Yep, very good. Any questions from council? I'll start with Councilmember Moore.
Roughly 200 bucks a foot.
I didn't do the math, but we'll take your word for it. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
So does everybody have to do this?
Yes.
And everybody also then has to do the expense reporting? Wow.
All the eligible entity, all the, the cities and agencies that receive SB1 funding, yes.
Okay, wow, gee, someone's having a whole lot of fun putting all this stuff together, I guess.
The state.
Must be like a, a big old binder like this.
This, the state maintains a public website where they show all these projects statewide. As you can imagine, when they were doing SB1.
I can't imagine.
Yeah, when they were doing SB1, it was slightly controversial, so this is the way of showing how it's being used, to be transparent.
So if we don't do this, if, for an entity that doesn't do this, then their money gets taken away from them? Is that how that works?
I did start reading the fine print. If we miss the deadline, we have like 90 days, but we're kind of apologetic and begging for it back. And in the meantime, our money has a risk of getting allocated to somebody else, but we do have some means of, if we forget about it or forget to do it, to clamor around and then get it back and get it. So. So there is a second chance here, but I wouldn't, I couldn't go in that route.
Agreed.
So pun intended, there's a road you don't want to go down.
Wow, there are times I wish some microphones didn't work. Are you done?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Skilman?
No question.
Councilmember Landman?
No question. I'll make a quick comment now and be done with it. I think more than just a side effect of being required to list these projects for SB1, I just wanted to comment that I appreciate the thoughtful and logical process that I've seen this city and our staff put together the last few years for this. You know, there's been a decision to move forward and invest in our local roads, and I think you see that coming forward with this. And I think even if there is a high degree of accountability required through SB1, that's nice that, number one, people can see where their money's going. And number two, it's nice when people want to know what's going on with the roads. We have a plan we can point to, this is where we think we're going. As always in life, who knows? But it's a good direction to go, and I think it's a big improvement. So thank you for that.
Agreed. All right, so no further questions for staff. So I'm going to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Ms. Alderman?
I repeatedly have said that there has been no public comment or no public, like workshops or anything on how to spend for the next five years for the payment project. You guys are deciding what this, how our taxed dollars are being used. You're totally, you, this is, you're ignoring streets that, this was 2017 when the payment was scored. And like Richardson Lane will be a dirt road by the time you get there. It is completely almost destroyed at this point. It had a score of zero. And you've not even brought up to the public of how we should have our money spent. It's wrong. You can't rely on this street saver program or the decisions. You need to be asking people what they want, not making the decisions for them. You're ignoring, the projects have always been downtown in L section. You're going back to L section. The west side is, has zero roads two years ago, and you're not planning to get to it in 2021 if there's any money left? You know, we, out in the west side, we have the highest property values, we pay the highest taxes, and we get nothing. We have no, we have no buses, we never see the police, we have a very low crime rate, which is not related. We have no park, we have nothing. The least we could have is a road that is not going to look like a dirt road within days, I swear. And also, you don't, you're not, none of this plan takes into account the damage that was done this, during this big rainy season. There is more, things have deteriorated awfully fast. And relying on the street saver and the two-year study rather than going out and seeing, and going to the people is what, and finding what we citizens want to do for our roads. We are 97th, seventh worst roads out of 106 counties and cities in the metropolitan. That's with Measure G. If you didn't have Measure G, you'd have nothing. So we need to, you need to address that we are the 97th worst roads in this, and you need to make plans that the people want. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just making a note on that. Hold on just a second. Mr. Barris, did you, are you coming up? Please come up. I'm just writing something. I'm not focused here.
I'm really surprised, council, that you don't hold a public workshop on street improvements. You've kicked the can down the road to this consulting firm to pass the buck to them to avoid responsibility, so you don't have to play politics and hear the public. Seems like the public's always in the way when it comes to setting these kind of policies. You do what you can to try to eliminate as much controversy and input as possible. This is not the way to do it. Then there's the issue of budget and estimating the cost of these repairs, because as we saw with the sewer project, estimates mean nothing. These contracts and budgets mean nothing. I guess they're just advisory numbers. They're expected to double in size because costs go up. I don't remember that type of budgeting. What happens, what happened to holding contractors responsible for their original bids? What happened to looking at unforeseen circumstances in the event, through the project of a construction project? Now we have staff that is redesigning sewer projects out of the public limelight, away from city council, doubling the cost of these sewer projects on the staff level. Now, I'm not questioning their motives. What I'm saying is that the process is perverted. You know, you've got, you've got a $2 million sewer budget, and it goes to, it goes to four. It almost doubles. And that's just crazy to try to whitewash it as if, well, you know, things kind of just go up in cost and time. That's not responsible budgeting. That's not leadership. You've got to throw yourself on the mercy of the taxpayers and go, hey, look, we budgeted for this project at X amount, and it doubled. Here are the reasons why. We redesigned it. Sorry, we didn't call for a special meeting to let you know, but just know that costs are going to go up, and we'll get to your streets maybe in your lifetime.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else who'd like to comment on this? I've seen no one. I'll close the public comment. By the way, whenever we do talk about these street projects, they are at a public meeting where the public can comment. So don't say that we don't take it to the public because we're in the public's house right here, right? Yes, we are. Because you've called it that, you've called it that many times before your time's up. Thank you. I also, I want to follow up on the, I thought you said 97th worst. Were you talking about streets in cities in the Bay Area?
The MTC.
MTC, all right.
And Sonoma County.
I'll look it up. No, that's fine. I've got enough to work with, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if it's helpful, I think Ms. Alderman would be referring to a pamphlet that MTC put out when they were pushing their recent measure. And I suspect their numbers weren't, I remember some discussion here at council, their numbers weren't exactly up to date, but, so that's where that came from. And I would not be surprised if MTC was happy with the older numbers for indicating there was a problem, but the truth probably laid somewhere slightly in between.
I also want to say that when you're doing any kind of a project, whether it's a sewer line, it's a paving project, building a structure, whatever, and you're partway through the project and a contractor comes and says, you know what? There was some unforeseen damage we didn't see. We now have to repair that. It would be irresponsible and not a leadership factor to simply say, well, we only budgeted this much money, so leave the project half-done. That would be very irresponsible. And I think that a lot of times, I've been involved with numerous projects over the years at work, and you put in an estimate, and you base your estimate on previous costs, and then you get a number of people who bid on these projects, and those bids run the gamut. You know, you've got them way down low, you've got them way up high, and usually it's somewhere in that lower half, I would hope, where we would put our faith in these contractors. But they have to back up all of their work. So there's multiple layers to this onion as we peel back, but the worst thing to do would be to say, well, we're not going to finish this project because it's going to cost us an extra several hundred thousand dollars. I mean, you're at a stage where you have to do it, and it's unfortunate that those things happen, but they often happen. We've also heard tonight at least two different examples already, how some projects are going to come in underbid, and that money comes back and, or stays here, didn't come back. So I think it's a give and take. All right, having said that, I've said my piece. Do we have any further questions or comments for staff? I'll start with Councilmember Moore.
No.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
No, actually. I mean, this, we're focusing on the roads at this point in the agenda, and I think it's necessary for us to be able to list everything, and our project needs to be put on the list, and so I think it's an important thing that we move forward to make.
Excellent. Councilmember Landman?
Yeah, just a final comment. I think one thing that's been missed in the discussion and all the comment that's been made, Cattati singularly, somewhat alone, we're actually moving up in our PCI numbers the last few years. That is a difficult thing to do. Roads are a notorious money suck. They will take money every conceivable way. That's why we don't do it by random vote of people in a room. There's a science to it, because there's a lot of ways to invest to make sure you can get the most out of it. But the fact that we actually are moving up in this through, number one, a lot of hard work from the people at work, for all of you in Cattati, our staff here, but also because of your public support through Measure G, that's the bottom line here. We're actually improving the roads here, and that's not the case in most places. And it's a darn good place to invest, I think, so I don't want anybody to lose sight of that, because we're actually making progress here. So thank you for the time to comment, and if there's no further comments, I'd like to move a resolution adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2019-20 funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Second? All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Please show it's a 5-0 vote in favor, and we are going to take a five-minute break. Break, and we will reconvene our meeting. We are at item 12, which is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So our police officers and our cadets, assisted Sebastopol Police, for their city's Apple Blossom parade recently, and our police department helped with the street closures and traffic direction for the event. And as happens every year, then they reciprocate by helping us with Kids' Day. So just an ongoing way that we help each other out. And then a little construction update. As part of our ongoing safety projects, the Public Works Department recently installed a three-way stop on La Plaza at East Sierra. So this is behind the scout hut in the fire department. There's that cut through on La Plaza, so there's now a three-way stop there, so hopefully it'll discourage people from flying through there. And then on development, just a reminder, I mentioned this last time, but Kessin Ranch, you probably saw some tree removal, like the stumps and stuff, and the downed trees that were laying on the site are being shipped now, and we expect them to start grading operations the first week of May, is the plan at least. So there'll be a lot of activity happening there very soon. On Sunday, April 14th, we hosted our second annual sold-out bunny brunch and egg hunt. The morning was full of families enjoying a delicious pancake breakfast, visits with the bunny, crafts, and an egg hunt finale. It was a great event, and we can't wait to do it again next year. And we have, I think it was three or four golden eggs that go, that are out in the field, and they get special prizes if you find the golden egg. And last year, I think we put three out, and we only found two. And same thing this year, only two were found, so I don't know what's happening to that third golden egg, but.
Realized they have it.
Maybe a bird sees something shiny in the grass and picks it up and flies away with it before the kids get out there. I don't know. Also, we have our new revamped spring/summer activity guide, Explore Cattati. It has come out and includes all of our events, programs, and other offerings for the season. Summer camp registration is officially open, and we're already starting to fill up, and I think everyone here has gotten that in their mailboxes by now. So I think a much nicer.
You want to say it looks fantastic.
Fabulous, fantastic.
And fabulous, both.
Yeah, it's much nicer than the previous version, which was just hard to find. In my opinion, very hard to find anything in it. It was kind of muddled a bit, so, much cleaner. And then on Saturday, May 4th, Daily Axe will be leading the Resilient Homes Tour that goes through Cattati, highlighting drought-friendly and efficient yards. For more info or to sign up, please visit the Daily Axe website at dailyaxe.org. That's in a partnership with the city and I think Sonoma Marin Water Saving Partnership. And then also on Saturday, May 4th, the Rotary Club of Rancho Cattati is hosting their "May the Fourth Be With You." Very, yeah, very inventive. Rotary Day at La Plaza Park from noon to 4:00 PM. All are welcome for this free event, which includes games for children, face painting, live music, food, and more. More information on this event is available at rancho cattarirotary.org. There might even be lightsaber fights, I don't know. We'll see. I don't know if that was permitted, but can ask Ashley about that. On Thursday, May 9th, the city will once again be partnering with the Bike Coalition of Sonoma County to host an Energizer Station for Bike to Work Day in front of the city's smart station. We will be there from 6:00 to 9:00 AM, providing light snacks, coffee, drinks, and information on bicycling in Sonoma County. Last year, we had over 100 cyclists stop to visit and expect, hopefully expect even more this year. And for more information on this or any of our programs or to volunteer at an event, please contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222 or awilson@catatiscity.org. And you also can get the latest information on our website, cattatiscity.org or the city's Facebook page. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I, on the Bike to Work Day, you said city staff will have some kind of tabling going on at the train station?
That's correct, yeah.
Oh. I did receive a postcard from, I guess, the Bike Coalition folks, and I did commit to Bike to Work that day.
Where are you working?
Here, of course.
It's a stationary bike.
Well, I'm not going to bike to Point Reyes. So, and that's really sad that there won't be any fanfare here. I guess I'm over it.
You'll have to.
But I'm still participating.
You'll have to bike to the train station.
I could do that, yeah, it's true.
You could bike to the station and volunteer with them, so you'd be working.
Okay, I think I'm going to drop this topic.
Not helping at this point.
Any comments or questions for the city manager on anything he mentioned? Yes?
Yes. I want to thank the staff and Public Works for getting that on the three-way stop. That was very well received in the neighborhood. They have been concerned about that for years, and they were ecstatic. I heard from multiple residents over there, so thank you very much for that. Hopefully that'll slow down that traffic in that region. And then secondly, we're talking about the Daily Axe, the Waterwise Tour. Will that be including the food forest over at the Pocket Park?
They may. When, I participated in that a few years ago, so our house was one of the houses that the public would come to on their own, or there was first a big group of about 25, but then there was individuals all day long, which we didn't sign up for that this year. But I know that they focused at Pocket Park for a while, and I know they were doing some work in there a couple of weekends ago, two a couple of weeks ago. So most likely, I mean, I think you may anticipate there'll be people there.
Thank you.
Yeah, if that helps.
Well, it was really the reference to the food forest.
Got it. That's something you should take up with Daily Axe. Thank you very much. Any other comments on city manager report items? This direction? None? Okay. We will thank you for that, Damian, and we will go on to the city council member reports. We'll start with Councilmember Landman.
And I'll be very succinct and say I have nothing for you tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That was one of your better report-outs. Thank you very much. Excellent. Vice Mayor Skilman?
I just have two quick report-outs. I went to a Done and Donate event at Tomatoes to Support Farmster, so that was a lot of fun. And then I also, at the last lab meeting on April 16th, we, there's a lot of interesting stuff going on at the libraries. They're looking at trying to get more people access and closing the digital divide, which I know is an interest that a lot of people have. And, okay. Then we also wanted to let people know that Nancy Kleibon, who has been a librarian there for years and years, is actually retiring. So just wanted to let everybody know in case we wanted to send her some acknowledgement or card or something, so that is all I have.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, I've been busy. Soon as it quiets down, maybe I can let you know what's going on. So on April 11th, I attended the Santa Rosa Plan. on. So, on April 11th, I attended the Santa Rosa Plan Groundwater Sustainability Agency Meeting. It was quite a lot of fun. Not. The members of the Board of Supervisors tried to put forth something called a Plan B. Although Plan B was not very well-defined, there was no detail or no structure or no anything described, but it was kind of like a "trust me, you'll like it." So I had a lot of questions. I think I was the only person that asked a whole lot of questions. Quite a few folks have talked to me after that report. So hopefully that will change the way it looks, and we will get something back. My understanding is that there are folks working on whatever Plan B is, and it's supposed to go to the Board of Supervisors in early May. And when that happens, I guess we will see, it will show daylight to see what Plan B is, and then we can determine which direction that we want to go in that. It was a very, very, very frustrating meeting because we had worked on this for now two years, and we keep coming to the 11th hour, and the rug keeps getting pulled out from under us, which I don't think is appropriate. But more to come on that. On 4/14, I attended the bunny brunch, and it was fun. I took my grandkids, and they loved it. I'm sure I will take them again. They had a lot of fun. It seems like all the kids had a lot of fun. Families enjoyed having brunch, and that went very smoothly also. On, let's see, where did I go then? Then I had the Sonoma Waste Management Agency Meeting. That, I was hoping that we would be able to say who the new executive director was, but that we had to put off again for another month because we're still having some difficulties with that. So hopefully, next month, we will get that done. We did approve the budget for 1920, so that was a good thing. And then, on April 22nd, I attended the Dry Creek Ribbon Cutting, and boy, did they do a really nice job. I think there were pictures in the newspaper this morning of the section that they did by Ferrari Corarno Winery there. And they really did a nice job. They showed us where the water had come up from the storms, and it really held up even in the recent storms. So, the Army Corps of Engineers really views the work that's been happening with both the Water Agency and the Corps and all of the landowners as extremely successful and highlights, you know, what can happen. And this is such, such a savings for Sonoma County that we are able to restore this creek and not have to build a massive, ugly, terrible pipeline to not utilize that creek. So, that study was done years ago. I can't even remember what year it was, but it was probably about 20 binders, and people hoped that those binders would stay up on the wall. And thus far, it has been really successful, and the fish seem to be doing very well. The landowners are very happy with the erosion control and the flood plains and stuff, so that's doing well, and it's doing what it's supposed to be doing. And lastly, I attended the Public Policy Facilitating Committee meeting for the Russian River Instream Flow and Restoration. They only have a meeting once a year, and they had presentations on how they manage the estuary. And that was really interesting, and they showed some really great pictures of how that happens and what they do and what has worked and what hasn't. And they've really learned a lot, and they're really adjusting what they do based upon all the data that they've collected over the years. The other thing that you will see probably soon is they are putting together a couple of different movies because it's become pretty apparent that people really don't get how their water systems work. So they are actually putting together some really basic movies, you know, about where the water comes from and, you know, overlaying all the dams and the recreational uses and the fish uses and all that. And then they're going to do one on the fish, and I forget what the third one is. So, those movies will be coming out. Because what they've learned is people really don't understand, you know, where their water comes on. They know they turn the tap on and fresh water comes out, but they really don't understand how complicated it is for us to have that benefit of that. So, that's what I've been up to.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, going back to Sonoma Water and the county being involved in this potential Plan B, as I understood it, at least from press reporting, that the idea was the county would be putting some money forward to subsidize the ongoing costs of supporting this. And the county's budget, again, from what I understand in the public at least, is difficult this year. And the Water Agency is in very good shape, so they're putting some forward, which is fine. I think that's wonderful. The only concern I had is, if we haven't heard this, I hope we can make sure, from our representative and all our representatives in the smaller cities there, that we have assurances that if the Water Agency is paying to underwrite the cost providing groundwater, this groundwater agency in the unincorporated areas, that that cost doesn't then show up on next year's budget for our municipal ratepayers to have to underwrite. I mean, I think it's just crucial that our local people can't subsidize folks in the unincorporated areas, and I want to make sure of that. And I'm sure that's probably the case. I would be very surprised, but I think it's the type of thing that we should probably double-check and make sure of. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I am, it's funny that you mentioned that. I kind of had that discussion with Damian earlier. The part of the budget that we see is only a part of the Water Agency's budget. We see the water transmission budget. So their budget also has other levels and layers on it. So, one of the things that I wanted to do is to kind of, you know how I love the budgets. So I wanted to find the bigger budget and see kind of where that money actually is coming from. Because there were, I can tell you, there were no line items in there in the water transmission budget that I could see. So I would like to find out where...
I would be surprised if it was folded in transmission, but I think if this is a discussion, it has to be something that comes forward, and it's made clear, and there's assurances that we'll make sure it's not in any way something that's passed down. Because there's an understanding that we're all going to carry our share of the load here, but we're not going to ask anybody, whether you live in the city or in the municipal, unincorporated areas, to cover somebody else's costs. We're all going to pay our fair share to do what we need to do with this. So, thank you for the report. That's actually interesting work you're doing over there, and glad you're there.
Well, that was some of my frustration because it did appear like we were going to be asked to cover things that I didn't feel were appropriate, and...
I'm picturing Lucy Van Pelt holding the football as the water, as the groundwater agency runs a riot up to it at the last minute.
So, we'll see. You know, I'm being told that I hope to be surprised that it'll all work out, but until I see it, I don't really know it.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Moore?
I don't have anything new to report. We have a REMF meeting coming up on Thursday. That's about it.
Very good. I know on April 11th, most of us attended mayors and council members at the, I mean, that's again when we were doing all of those various appointments to the different groups, which I mentioned earlier. So there was a subcommittee formed of myself, Mayor Harrington from Sonoma, and Mayor Belfort from Roanoke Park to draft yet another letter regarding the CASA compact. So there's been, it's the gift that keeps given. There's been one now from mayors and council members, Ledge Committee. There's been one from the city of Kattati. I believe the city of Roanoke Park sent one before we did in Healdsburg, and I don't know of any other cities to date that have, but I've left that section blank. Part of the reason is, so we were to draft this letter, which I did over this last weekend, and I sent it to the two of them for review. So I'm just waiting for comments back. The unfortunate part is that it was decided at that meeting it would come back to the next mayors and council members, which is not till June, and it's just, it just seems kind of wacky, in my opinion, to send something out at that point in time when we've got bills moving through the Senate and the Assembly on housing-related issues. This really should be much more timely. And so, who knows? Maybe the legislators will hear about it some other way, whatever that means. April 16th, for those of you who didn't know, I attended a fantastic event, and it was with bunnies and children, and that was reading at the library with Mayor Belfort. We had a great time. The 23rd, that's today, John, okay, today, there was a Ag and Open Space Matching Grant Program Subcommittee meeting. So, we were addressing the one issue of recusal, which is the issue that's now come two letters from, again, that wonderful group, Mayors and Council Members Association. So, I think we did come up with a recommendation, and this Thursday is our full advisory committee meeting. So, we will report out to the advisory committee with direction on, and there's still, there's still more work to be done with the matching grant program, which the cycle will start sometime in January, this coming January. So there's still a long time, but we have a lot of work to do to kind of clean up the criteria, make it more understandable for people who do apply. And it's jurisdictions that can apply, like cities, but it's also nonprofits and other organizations. And it's a matching grant program. So clearly, our example is the Veronda Falletti property, which was done eight years ago, 10 years ago, maybe it's been some time. And I mentioned this Thursday, Ag and Open, and also for the public, don't forget that April 30 and May 7, we have our two budget study sessions here in this room. So just as a reminder, that's coming out there. And that was all I had. All right. We'll move on to item 14, public comment on non-action agenda items. Ms. Alderman? Did you like the delay? Yeah. Did you like that delay? It's kind of a nice touch.
This is, because I'm Class of 81 from Rancho Kattati High School, I wanted to mention this. Class of 81 has more fun. But the Tag Building, the huge, great, it's supposed to be wonderful, has an open house on Saturday, and it's supposed to be incredible.
Eleven to one, I believe.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. I forgot about that.
Yeah, the, a couple of things I wanted to, for future, I'm, one of the things, one of the ladies mentioned was during the public hearing, there's no record of her comments or anything. So I would like to see if there, you can have an action item on, I mean, a future agenda item on changing this action, action item, agenda, minutes, you know, where if you look back 15 years, everybody's, you knew what happened in the meetings. Everybody was, they were beautifully written. And now, all it says is Lori Alderman commented, George Barrett commented, Miss Citizen commented. It doesn't tell anything. It would be much more respectful to have more detailed notes of what the citizens of the say in response. And it would solve that kind of problem where she didn't see any notes of what she had said or anybody said. So, anyway. The other thing I wanted to mention was weed abatement. It's, I see no public hearings, nothing. We're, it's going to be an issue by another month. The other thing is for future agenda items, we're still waiting to hear anything on the hotel. We were supposed to have public hearings. There's still no update. We don't, we don't even know if it's happening anymore. You guys give us no clue. So, I'd like to hear about the hotel. And the other thing is, still, there are no senior services in the city. It needs to be an agenda item, too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Barrett?
Well, if, if Lori Alderman is batshit crazy, we sure need a whole lot more people like her at these meetings. She's quite impressive. Matter of fact, that email that she pointed out is attached to the cork board up there tonight. You might want to take a look at it. It's official email from the city, through the city's email service. All right? And, you know, if that email doesn't fit into your Kattati City Council Code of Conduct and your requirements, I don't know what does. It's, the Code of Conduct has been useless since it was adopted, and here's a perfect example to take a look at this and decide whether you should just do away with the Code of Conduct altogether as a farce, which was just mainly put together to try to oust me from the city council. But as far as future agenda items, you know, when it comes down to a city manager's report, I'd like to hear something about the hotel coming to town from time to time, what's happening, have they backed out, what's going on, you know, give us a little bit of, give us a little bit of encouragement here, or what's going on. And also, when we talk about these projects going over budget as a general rule, what I understand from Mr. Scott is that there was a redesign. There was a redesign here, and that was my point. If the weather is such that there's a lot of rain and there's some unforeseen circumstances that cause things to go over budget a certain amount, granted, let's just talk about it briefly and put it to bed. But in this case, there was some redesign. That, those, these things should be brought before council and the public so we can take a look at this. Also, I attended the Falletti Ranch Farmster Project Workshop in this room, what, over a year ago? And there was so much confusion and so many different ideas about that project. The mayor had promised us at the time, or at least the council that was present at the time, said, "Don't worry, there's going to be a lot more workshops. Don't worry. We've got a lot to figure out regarding this funding, what it's going to look like, what the purpose is, tourism, parking. We have a million things. We're going to have you another workshop." We haven't had seen another workshop. And it's high time we get some reports from the city manager or council on what's going on with this, these fake workshops that we were promised. Also, I know, I noticed that Super Burger went out of business. Although there's ribbon cuttings when we get new businesses coming to Kattati, you know, a little mention that we're losing a business, losing some jobs, someone losing their investment is worth mentioning from time to time. It's going to give us some encouragement to try to help the city where we can to enjoy the successes, and then also look at the failures and what we can do about it as a community to keep things on the positive. The weed abatement issue, again, this is going on for so long that I'm really concerned that the city is going to be approaching some aspect of gross negligence. If anything happens, we have a wildfire that comes through this town later on this summer through all these high grasses. All these city meetings and these telecasts are going to come back on you. And I really need you to take a look at this seriously because gross negligence is not going to be acceptable.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to comment? All right, seeing no one. I'll go ahead and close the public comment. Mr. Barrett? Mr. Barrett?
Yes, sir.
Super Burger is not closing. They're moving to Charles and Old Red on that big corner. They've actually, it's a bigger space. So...
That would be expanding.
That's the expansion that we're...
It's the building that's been under construction for months and has had the huge sign on it for a month or so.
All right, let's now move to...
Mr. Mayor, if I may indulge you for just a minute on...
All right. Please, make it brief, though.
No, no problem. The email that's, the response that's posted on the bulletin board is a email of my response, but there is no original email with that. So, this is like completely out of context. Where's the original email?
Well, we're not going to get into a discussion of this.
No, no, I'm just saying, this is completely out of context because it just shows a response. Thank you.
All right. We're moving on to item 15, information received after the agenda was posted. We have nothing. Okay. Item 16, we will be going into closed session. This is Conference with City Labor Negotiators, Government Code Section 54957.6, City Designated Representative, City Manager or Designee Employee Organization, Kattati Police Officers Association, which is the CPOA. And I'd like to go ahead and open this up for public comment. Seeing no one. The gavel goes down, and we will adjourn temporarily to our closed session until we report out. Thank you. Thank you.